Meeting to order the, to order July 7th, 2020, regular meeting of the Harrison County Board of Education. We've previously done the pledge of allegiance, so we'll move on to delegations. Are there any delegations?
They're not received.
No delegations. That moves us into Ms. Stutler's first superintendent's update.
Yes, Mr. President, we have quite a few things to discuss on the superintendent's update and we're gonna let, we didn't put the reentry plan on here for agenda item tonight, but we wanted to at least look at, there's been a few changes that we've been discussing. It's really the same plan that we've been looking at and we'll let Donna Hague talk about the changes that she's made and you should have a copy of that in your packets for the reentry.
Yeah, we have been discussing this with the stakeholder group since the second week of April. Dr. Meehan started that discussion early and so you'll see at the top of this one, this is an updated draft affected July 7th with the governor's mandate of the face mask. So there's some new verbiage there. There also is the proposal that we start school, the first day just grades one, six and nine would report and then on August 25th, grades two, seven and 10 would report so that each one of those schools could work with smaller populations of students to go over hygiene, the new protocols, entries and exits. But at this time, absent any further guidance from the State Department, we are proposing in this draft a five-day reentry program for our students. So all students would attend on all five days with heightened cleaning. That's what this current draft contains as well as some resources and materials that have been put out by the CDC in the guidance. Dr. Nelson has reviewed this as well as Chad Bundy and they are approving it. So it's just a draft that we are looking at. So after those first seven days of school, when we're bringing students in in smaller waves by grade level, we would propose a five-day start with all students present for those five days with the required mask above age nine.
With this plan, like where we have to have so many days for the state guidelines and with them not all starting on the same day, with them, for those students who started later, would they have to end later in the year?
No, we have enough bank time and instructional minutes already built into our calendar that we could count those as instructional days. And so that is part of our proposal in this draft, and you all would like to review that, is that we would use some of those accrued instructional minute times that are already built into our calendar to bring our students in in waves. And there are similar counties surrounding us that are using that model in that process. I know Mrs. Stutler's talked to several districts and hearing their reentry plans.
Yeah, we actually had a regional superintendent's meeting and it was the 12 superintendents that used to be in the RESA 7 region and they're all trying to make their plans very similar and a lot, well, all of them are in agreement with the staggered start so they could teach protocol for students coming in, spend the day with them, teach them the protocol and then they're really all in agreement with trying to get kids back to school. Of course, that's contingent of all and a lot of the things coming out of the governor's office and things coming out of the Department of Ed right now. But they are all really working together. We're having another meeting next week. I believe Gary Hammrich says that the, President Hammrich, their state boards meeting next week too.
State boards meeting, this week or next week?
Yeah. So there's a lot of, a lot of discussions going on and a lot of concerns and we're listening, we're hearing the concerns from the public and so we're just weighing all that out and, but we have to have a plan to get back in school and we're trying to all focus and get on the same page at least as local counties.
And if you would look at page 34 in this, that's just a summary of that chart that just sort of touches the major areas that we had discussed in our stakeholder groups starting that second week in April. We've updated that, Ms. Stutler and Jody Sperry and I have looked at that and Jimmy looked at that today and so we've updated that as this information's coming in and flew. So, but that, those last two pages is the summary document that we would send out to parents.
Is that 34?
Yeah, it's, well, it's the page after 33. It's not a numbered page, it's that last chart.
Right back to the last two pages.
Okay.
And that's sort of the basic topic areas, but we're adjusting it as we receive new information.
And people need to understand, there are a lot of things other than just opening the school and teaching. You have to bus them and get them there. You have to feed them once they're there. And then aside from that, you know, everyone wants their kid in school and they want them educated, but it's also our duty to make sure that our employees are safe because if our employees are not safe and we're sending them in and it's not a safe environment, we're no better than a, than a man who owns a coal mine that sends them down in an unsafe coal mine.
Right.
I mean, we have to make sure that, that the people who are forced to be there because it's their job are safe as well. So there's a lot of components to this and nobody wants kids in school more than everyone in this room, but we have to do it safe and make sure we do it the right way.
See, I, I know we came up with like a code red, code blue, where now level one, level two, level three. Is there one where you can still have the students, the students who would need to stay home, where would it be like really sick where they had, where their grandparents, they were very immune deficient?
Yeah.
Where they can still do online and that would be, my fear is just like, I just want to be as normal as we can. And I understand some students can't because of who's raising them or because there's things. So can we do distance learning with them online where maybe we, we look at like Skyping into the classroom where they can do it that way?
Yeah, we, we addressed that on pages nine and 10 of this section and those personnel or students are identified as medically fragile with documentation and of course it defines, the CDC gives us definitions of who is considered medically fragile to COVID-19 as well as, you know, we know that 7% of our student population currently, based upon what our nurses gathered in the spring to submit to the state, 7% of our student population is already documented medically fragile, the diabetics. And so we do have protocols in there of what they would do and the offerings that would be available to them. Once again, in draft form until we get further guidance.
And the state needs to assist us as well because the way it is now, I mean, that fifth day, that letter is automatically generated and goes to every parent that your child missed five days and, and you're subject to criminal penalties and all that. Those need to be, the state needs to give us some sort of waiver or else it's going to be on us and, and I see a shaking of the head there and I think that's Mr. Kirby behind there.
Jim Kirby, yeah.
It's behind the mask. But, but you know, he's going to take the heat and we're going to take the heat because there's going to be a thousand letters go out because kids miss five days of school. That, those go out automatically. We don't send them. I mean, we're not the ones that trigger those. You know, that's Weavis that does that. So that needs to be addressed too where it's going to be, you know, we're going to be a, a three weeks into this and people hit five days because they don't want to go during this where they're sick and they're, they're quarantined and then it's going to fall back on us, so.
I agree with that 100%. Do you know if the superintendents, do they meet with the state superintendent, state superintendent and to give them things like what?
That's in code though, is it not?
It's in code.
So that needs to, yeah, that's going to need the governor doing something. The legislature has to fix it or at, at least the governor has to do something. It's not going to be the state school board, but someone needs to address it or, you know, kid misses five days, they're getting a letter stating it's turned over to the prosecutor's office or whatever and it's a scary letter. So it's going to, it's going to cause people to send kids to school when they're, they shouldn't be going, so that's another issue.
And there's other things in code that, I mean, it's going to have to be addressed as far as the teacher's day and their plannings and their, you know, how we're doing lunches and all that. There's a lot of things in code that so far the state is looking at, but they haven't addressed it with any real solutions for us yet, so.
No, the big, the big key word here is normal and I'd like to meet the person that's going to explain in this day and time and with what's going on, what the word normal really is going to be. I, I don't think he's sitting in this room or around this table and, you know, if he's sitting in Charleston, West Virginia, I'd like for him to, you know, to, to put it out there because, you know, you get, every, every county, every, this, in Clarksburg and everywhere else, you're getting, well, let's try this, why don't we try that? And the bottom line is, until we get a mandate and directive from the state, there's not a lot that can be said, you know, as to what the normal is going to be here in educating our kids here in Harrison County until that comes about. So I want, I want to meet the guy that at the end, in the end, that comes up with the normal education.
It's the new normal.
So I have two questions. One being the immunocompromised staff that are going to be, that we have in our, in our school system. It doesn't really go into what, what conditions that we would provide for them, which leads into my second question. Are they going to, I, I've heard this from a number of people, are they going to have to use their vacation time? Is it going to be an accrued minute time? If they get exposed to COVID, how are they going to quarantine for 14 days? And, and then, I mean, what's, what's that, how's that going to work?
One of the things that, and that there is some loose language about that in here. I know that Ms. Stutler through personnel has, those employees who have previously documented those concerns with her. Based upon the number of students that we would have that would be medically fragile that would need to stay home, we could decide those personnel to offer virtual services exclusively to that population of students based upon grade levels when we determine how many students are impacted by that. That would be one of the things about doing a survey to our parents and saying, you know, do you have a medically fragile student that would need to have home, home online instruction? We could gather that data and then have the appropriate personnel assigned to that based upon grade levels. If we wouldn't have the personnel to do that, there are options to deliver virtually through the State Department that they released just a couple of days ago to superintendents, but those, those are things that as we gather more data from our families and work more closely with our nursing staff and our schools, those are opportunities to reassign that personnel.
So then where, where do we stand with teachers or staff who are exposed to COVID? What's this, what's the status quo or the, the, the protocol going to be for that?
Yeah, so we do have that identified in here if you look, and I don't know extensively you want to go into this, President Hammrich, but we do have some protocol there. On page 11, there is information that is based off of CDC recommendations that if a student would, or if a student or personnel would come in contact, at what point could they return to school? What are the symptoms and what are the protocol to do that? So I don't know how deeply you want to go into that tonight, but we do have provisions for that. Another thing that we might run into is, you know, days before school, starting with students, we could have an employee that would test positive. I know Ms. Stutler was working with Jody Sperry and Chad Bundy and I today to get days scheduled, you'll look at the bottom of page 11, to do testing, voluntary testing of all of our employees, service and professional, county office, maintenance department, all of them, on August 12th, 13th and 14th. And that extends on to page 12 too. We would set windows of time where the health department would offer that pre-testing voluntary to our employees by feeder. The way it was broken down by feeder and time is because the health department in running these have looked closely and reflected upon the max number of people that they could do during the window of time. Our nursing staff would work with them to do the testing as well, but they have offered that voluntary pre-testing to our employees. And so we could, as you say, Mr. Devano, we could have an employee who tests positive to COVID on August 12th and then we would need to use those protocols for what that employee would do at the start of school.
Would, would the test be back, I mean, the results of the test be back by?
It's my understanding 48 hours.
Forty-eight hours, oh, okay.
It's the window that they've given. So they held off testing until August 12th, 13th and 14th because that's the window closest to when we have students. We have made provisions, Mrs. Stutler did, for all of our trainings in which we're using large groups of individuals, 500, 600 people, like we usually do at the beginning of the year. On August 19th, this will be offered virtually where employees could physically attend in their classroom space. And so we are up to groups of 100 now and so many of our faculty centers, all of our faculty centers are not over 100 and so our faculty centers could meet under social distancing requirements, but usually during that big county training, we bring multiple schools together, so we've made provisions to do that virtually.
And we actually have been working all summer, working with the high schools for conditioning and working through those as the guidelines change and the principals, and Jimmy's worked with them as well, Mr. Lopez, on, you know, how to bring students into the, the building if they need to and, and practice outside safely, so, and that's been changing as, and just like with the mask mandate, I mean, we had to make changes to the, the kids that are already on our campuses working. We're currently working to put together some guidelines for the bands. They're trying to determine it. There's just a lot of unknowns and people are working, trying to make things as easy as possible for the return. If we go back and there's games, do, do we have the bands performing? So that, we're working on that right now. So as these things come to us, we're trying to work through with the information that we have right now. And as we get closer to school, hopefully we'll have more answers on, because right, like as Mr. Hoag said, there's no one here in this room that can make the answers right now, but we're just working through them as we're getting new information every day. And I appreciate Dr. Hague because she's been working with, we talked with Mr. Bundy today, Chad Bundy today, he's doing another free screening next Tuesday at RCB. They're starting at noon to 7:00. The last one, you know, was quite, yeah, busy, so either scheduling another one, so that's going to be next Tuesday. He's already arranged that with Mr. Gibson, so just a lot of things happening and we're trying to move with the, be flexible as things are changing.
See, I have to agree with Doug on this and you just brought up all the same points. There has to be some directive from the state. Let's just take sports for example. How could Harrison County be conditioning but another county not? And then we go to a football schedule and, you know, we're all differing. I, I mean, basically that can't happen. I mean, there's so many days required for athletes to be, have their practices. I mean, until the governor or, or the, or the school board, you know, superintendent, they have to give a directive for the whole state because it affects teachers, it affects sports, it affects schedules, it affects pay, and, and I just feel like we keep on spinning here.
Well, my take on it.
And I think it's time somebody, you know, at the, at the higher level makes a stand and a statement on this because everybody is in one go and it's really not fair.
My take on it is, the schools were closed by the governor by an order and until he opens them up, then, then they're closed. So he needs to be the one to do that.
Absolutely.
And the state school board does, but it's much easier, we've seen it before, where the one state school board won't take, they, they could all take the, the beating, but they'd rather 55 county school boards take the beating, is what it is. But in my opinion, he closed down the schools, it's up to him to open them up or not open them back up, so, but, you know, so we have to wait. We should know something a little bit more next week after the meeting.
I didn't do that yesterday.
We're, we're, we're trading daylight for darkness right now. I mean, we're in that situation where we're trading daylight for darkness.
We'll know more in two weeks, though.
Yeah, and we are putting together a plan for, I've had several employees reach out that we know are not going to return because they're compromised in some way and we will work with them. I mean, there's different options that we can do for those employees, so.
What about fear? I, I mean, I know that's not on the list, but, but it's real and, I mean, it's obvious right here from day one when we discuss it. Look at this side of our Board of Education and there's Michael and I that haven't had as much fear. So you definitely have this divide of true fear and people that don't and, and it seems like they keep on coming together. And what about a teacher that says, "I'm afraid. I have a father that's not well." I, I mean, that's not on the list, but we have to validate that fear.
Right, and we, I have had employees reach out with those things and, and we will work with them. I mean, we, we're going to do all we can. We don't want somebody coming into the building that's just, like you said, that is so afraid and it's real to them and they have grandparents or something that they're living with or older folks, all the ones that are at risk, so we'll definitely be working with them. Right now, I know it's mandated, we pay them time for if they have to quarantine. I mean, we give them, give them those days and they'll be paid for those days. Now what happens when that person returns and they have to quarantine again or something? So those are all questions.
And I'll just say, your staff and even the board here are going to earn your money over the next six months, so.
But we're addressing that the best that we can and we will work with employees. I mean, we understand it's truly a fear, so.
If there's, if there's any pharmaceutical salespeople out there, they need to get their company on the ball, get us a vaccine. It's coming? Okay.
Yeah, they're projecting end of the year versus next year.
That's the same thing Donald Trump said.
Just, just like our protocols from the state, right? All coming, just like the things.
All right.
Mr. Lopez wanted to update the board on the facility, on the projects that we've got going on right now.
Yes, we did, we did a pre-bid meeting the other day, what was it, last week, for the Lost Creek Elementary School and those bids will come in, we're going to open the bids on July the 16th, 1:00 up here in the county office, so that'll give us an idea about some of the more precise projected costs of that project. We met today a little bit with the Gore Elementary School project and still trying to refine some of the educational spaces and, and programs. And I know that superintendent also, Dr. Hague, are going to work together so that we can take a look at those programs and we've looked at those, but we just want to make sure that we're, we're utilizing our space efficiently. And of course, the CEFP, talking to Tom Worley before that, it looks like we're going to have to vote on that in August to give him time to get that completed in, in some of the areas that he needs to get complete. As far as the, the athletics, right now, everything that we have been doing is, we strictly follow the guidance given us through the governor and West Virginia Secondary Schools Athletic Commission, giving an opportunity, really positive opportunity, for kids to be taught learned behaviors and how to, you know, how, how to responsibly handle themselves when they're in our facilities participating. We felt that that was important to give our, our kids, our staff, the possibility to jumpstarts the learning curve and how, how we can actually, you know, if we get the opportunity to reopen. I still haven't been given any specific guidance on, on transportation. We're hoping to get something from that, but anyway, that's, that's my update.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. I think that's it for the superintendent's update.
Okay, I have two quick items that I'll put in under your superintendent's update. One is, you know, every year we do a retreat. Obviously with what's going on, I don't think it's responsible of us to travel to Stonewall and do the retreat, but we do get great information from that and it's our opportunity to meet with the principals and, and our department heads. So I would like to be able to find a day, if there's no objection, find a day right after the teach, or principals come back to their buildings. If we can do that here in the STEAM Center and basically work through lunch and dinner and maybe make a full day and cover the same ground without having to leave here, if there's no, I mean, I don't know what everyone else's feelings of that are.
I, I'm in agreement with that.
Because it gives us the opportunity to meet with the principals and meet with everyone and get the same updates without having to travel.
Now, just be on staggered times, I mean, you know, maybe the.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't be able to bring large crowds probably to, and it may get canceled altogether, but I mean, if, if you can come up with a day.
And you're still interested in providing them lunch?
Yeah, we'll just do lunch and, and bring the, yeah, the meals in here. That way we don't have to leave and take time and we can, you know, spend a 10-hour day or so of actual doing work and going over different things of the budget, things of that nature.
Will we put those?
Yeah, that should be.
Yeah, so if you can find that. And the only other thing is, if there's no objection, I'd just like to add, change our agenda after item 11 but before 12, which is adjournment, if we can add into there, if there's no objection, board member comments. That way there's a place, before we adjourn the meeting to, for each, each board member.
You would like to have board member comments added.
Before adjournment.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it'll be a new number 12 and then 13 will be adjournment, but if you just put board member comments and, and in that way, that gives each board member an opportunity to express any sort of comment before we adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
Any objection to that?
No objection.
Okay. Add that and then adjournment would be 13.
Lucky 13.
All right, nothing further in superintendent's update?
No, I'm good.
We'll move on to approval of consent items. Is there a motion?
So moved, okay.
It's been moved by Mr. Devano and seconded by Mr. Hoag. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries the new, under new business renewal of Newsela agreement for 2020 and 2021. Ms. Stutler?
Yeah, that is through our federal programs and that is a program that we use every year, all of our schools use that. And because of the increase in cost, we had a little, it was usually a little less than that than we had to bring it to you for approval because of the amount this year.
So it's a normal renewal.
We have Lola Brown here from federal programs, if you have any questions about what that program is.
We've been using it for several years.
Yes.
It's just, yeah.
We started in 2017, 18 with a trial subscription and then for the past two years, over four year subscriptions of that.
This is Schoolology?
No, this is Newsela, which is an online platform, news articles, nonfiction texts written on five different levels, so that gives teachers ability to differentiate instruction for their ability.
And, and this is federal funds?
Yes.
What exactly is social emotional learning?
Social emotional learning, it helps with the, like, there, CASL has different topics like self-management, which is like self-regulation. Then it's six different competencies to help children to develop socially and emotionally. And so that is a collection of articles around those different topics that teachers can use in pretty boardroom conversations to help children work through feelings and how to regulate their behavior, some things like that.
Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Hoag, seconded by Mr. Devano. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, brings us down to personnel matters. Is there, and also there is, personnel matters as listed and then a personnel agenda adjustment?
Did you give us the agenda adjustment?
It's in there. It, it should be in there.
There it is.
Is it?
Yes, it's in the folder.
Okay.
You're all over.
Is there a motion on personnel matters?
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved by Ms. Messenger. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hoag. Any discussion?
Uh, yes. I see the guy in the mask back there. Oh, wait a minute, everybody's in a mask. In regard to the extra Phoenix teacher and all that, can you give us just a, a brief, you know, thing?
Who are you talking about?
I think, I think Mr. Kirby provided in your packets a breakdown of the Phoenix program.
Number of students and all that, yeah.
It's a one, it's a one sheet.
Basically, Phoenix program is for kids that are experiencing behavioral problems.
They've been from their regular school typically to Evolution Program, which is our alternative school.
Right.
And they're unable to function there as well. They typically do a stipulated disposition, which I know Gary's aware of it and I know Mr. Devano's aware of it as well. They've signed off on those being president before in the past and those children are placed in that Phoenix program for a period of time specified by the principal, signed off by the superintendent.
And it's at night?
It is 4:00 to 6:00. We use two teachers, they're there three hours a day, the one extra, two instruction hours, one hour for planning and extra time if students' parents are late or whatever to make sure that they're able to exit. We do not provide transportation. Transportation is provided by the parents. We utilize the credit recovery program for the high school students and we utilize educational packets for the middle school students coming, those packets come from Evolution Middle School teachers.
Okay, if they go to this program and they get back on track, do they go back into the? Okay, if they go to this program and they get back on track, do they go back into the Evolution pro?
They go back into Evolution for a grading period. And if the wish is that they go back to their home school, then they can go back to their home school. A majority of them, if it's a high school kid, a majority of those kids remain at United High School and participate there. They feel more at home, more at ease, more comfortable. They have relationships with the teachers.
And I guess the bigger issue is that if we don't have this, then we have to provide the education for those students anyway. So, we're sending multiple teachers to the, the library to teach those individuals rather than just having two teachers teach them all in one place.
And we're looking at a, a cost of approximately forty-five thousand dollars for this program, where if we were providing homebound instruction, we, we, I think, when we originally started this in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, the year before that, we looked at it, and it was either a hundred and forty-two thousand or a hundred and forty-eight thousand to provide education to the students that were homebound for behavioral issues at that point. And you can see the numbers there in sixteen, seventeen, we had twenty-nine, seventeen, eighteen, twenty-seven, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-nine students. And in nineteen twenty, we had twenty-six students, but that was just through the March, and we hadn't hit the, the time when behavior seems to escalate in the schools. So, I would say we were on track to be over thirty at that point.
Okay, 'cause sometimes you get confused, and sometimes it's only in a classroom, and there may be only three or four kids or whatever.
And we actually have really good turnout in this with these kids. I mean, we're, we're, there's been multiple nights that we've had full participation in all of our kids.
Well, I mean, twenty-nine, twenty-seven, I may be tough for one teacher to.
Well, that's for the entire year. That's how many kids we service that entire year. Typically, we don't have any more than fifteen kids a night. And we try to work that to keep it down to fifteen.
With, and the two teachers, um, separated or in the same classroom?
They're in the same classroom. And those two teachers are team teach, and they float around and help all the students, as well as we have a, a professional resource officer that's in there that works with those students as well or have behavioral issues. His presence is necessary with this group of students.
What is the age group for the Phoenix?
Middle school and high school.
And they're in the same classroom together?
Yes.
And like I said, otherwise, it'd be fifteen teachers going out to teach those fifteen students at the library or whereas, so.
And, and that's at nighttime? I, I'll tell you, I just have to get my mind together on this. I get very confused about all these programs. And so then, Evolution, that is also middle school to high school?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and that's taught during the day?
It is.
At what, the upper floor in the ward?
Yes, it is upstairs at the United High School.
Okay, and how many students do we usually have in that?
Oh. Typically, we try not to have any more than fifteen students in a classroom. There's two middle school classrooms and four high school classrooms.
Okay.
And they only teach core subjects. In middle school, we teach English, language, arts, and we teach mathematics.
Okay, then let's downgrade a little bit and tell me about United. How many students and?
It's about one twenty-five.
We're about one, one twenty-five, that sounds about right.
Well, wait a second. So, if there's two middle and two, and four high schools, so four, six classrooms with fifteen students.
Maximum.
Maximum, so six, okay, so we have about approximately ninety-two hundred students in Evolution at a time, okay? Is that, am I correct on that?
It's approximate, and at the beginning of the school year, your numbers are lower. The end of the school year, they're a little higher.
And then we have about a hundred and twenty-five at United.
That's correct.
And then Phoenix, twenty-five, okay. Now, the next one, which is not related, is our Back to Basics program, correct?
Yes.
Is there anything between Back to Basics and United?
Other than the physical plant, I don't believe so.
No, yeah, Back to Basics is just for those students in elementary school, and it generally is maxed at twelve to sixteen students is what we have it set up for. The, the other programs that Mr. Kirby is talking about are for middle school and high school.
Yes.
Okay, that's, I just, I just, you know, I have just gotten so confused over this. And I see these come up like, I, like Doug, like Doug said something, 'cause I already had that written out, too. I wanted to know about the Phoenix teacher as well, 'cause it's about fifteen thousand dollars.
Sure.
Actually, fifteen thousand one hundred and twenty dollars is what I came up with. And I, and I keep seeing these, and I'm always the one that's questioning it, so I just wanted to get my mind straight.
Maybe if you can kind of, someone do a chart, you know, here's the building, here's the programs there and how many staff and how many.
Yeah, I think we had that at one point. I don't know that I've seen in a while.
Oh, let me ask you, I've had, in fact, I just did last Tuesday. I, I was trying to get a title for a vehicle, and the secretary, you know, that, that's a difficult thing to do anymore. But anyway, she said, "Oh, I know you." And the story I got, and I remember talking to Dr. Manchin, was about a student that then I, that wanted to go to United but was refused. What does that mean? Now he's homeschooled and lost his student.
That could be a result of functioning of that child. If they are on an alternative assessment, we don't have a special education staff there to work with those students.
So, that, that student would be refused at United?
We couldn't provide those services that are required for that child by the IEP there.
So, none of the students at United have IEPs?
That's not true. That's not true. We're talking about a student who is, doesn't receive a regular high school diploma. They receive a modified high school diploma.
At United?
At United. Those students, unless they're functioning, are.
That's the thing, I'm, I got modified.
And they cannot function without extreme special education assistance.
But he's, you're not saying United is all modified?
No.
That's right, I think that's where you got confused. If they're at United, it's not a modified. He's saying the ones that, that get turned down are the ones that need to be modified, that they don't have those services for.
Yes.
Which are severely impacted.
Yes.
Okay. Well, you know, of course, that would like take me by surprise, to be told that someone was refused at United. That's why I'm asking some questions on this. So, really, over at that school, we have about two hundred and fifty students being serviced over at the Gore School right now.
Roughly, yes.
Okay.
And we might, I might add, we had fifty-one graduates?
Yeah, that is almost, well, it is double.
It's double. We had fifty-one high school graduates from United High School this year.
Thanks, you know, I, I appreciate you bringing that information 'cause it makes it a little more clear now with all the different programs.
Sure.
You know, that we're getting the, the most bang for our buck.
I, I think this is a great service we provide, and I think we do, do really good for them.
All right, thank you.
Anything further? All right, we have a motion and a second to accept the Personnel Agenda with the Agenda Adjustment.
I would like to go to executive session. I move pursuant to six-nine-eight-four-two of the West Virginia Code that the board go into executive session to discuss personnel, Personnel Matters, which, if discussed in, in public, might affect adversely the reputation of any personnel.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It will be in the executive session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Return from executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
One, uh, aye.
Aye. All right, that moves us back to the original personnel. We had a, a motion on the floor from Ms. Messenger. If you want to rescind that, because we're gonna pull something out.
I'll rescind that.
To rescind it. Now, I will accept a motion on the original Personnel Agenda without the, the Agenda Adjustment.
Some moved.
I'll second that, and I have to recuse myself from page ten. Re-renewed, it's just volunteer position, but, so.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded with the noted recusal from Ms. Messenger. Any discussion on the Personnel Agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, that brings us down to the Agenda Adjustment. We'll vote on that separately. And that is.
Can you stick with us?
I've tried.
And that is extracurricular recommendation for employment of Robert Shields for head girls basketball coach, Robert C. Byrd, effective July eighth. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Uh, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Brings us down to, actually, we will, on the next agenda, we will start our board member comments there, but since it's not on there, it brings us down to motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for adjournment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Hoag?
Children of peace, go in peace.